All right, and we are reconvened from our closed session, and I'd like to get a motion to certify our closed session, please.
Mayor, I move that we certify closed session and that we talk about only what we convened the closed session to talk about.
Second.
Second.
Okay, motion made in second, uh, Judy, please.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Bernal.
Aye.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
And again, I apologize to the public that was watching and to those that are attending here this evening. Next item on the agenda is the audience for visitors, and if anybody would like to address counsel on any subject, now is that time.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to introduce two attorneys from my office I have with me tonight. I have Lisa Moore and Andy Mullins. These are two young attorneys. Lisa's been with me like four years, I guess, and five. How flies when you're having fun. And Andy came to work with us in August. Lisa has been working primarily with the building officials dealing with lead ordinance violations, zoning ordinances, building problems, and also with social service. We have issues with abandonment of abuse in social services. And Andy's just coming on board, and he'll be doing some research and drafting and helping me with the city issues. So I thought you'd like to see a face to go with the names that you will see pass across your desk on occasion. I just want you to meet them tonight.
Thank y'all very much for coming. And I do appreciate that, Wayne, thank you. All right, next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt the minutes for the regular session of October the 11th, 2011.
As amended.
As amended. Second.
Hey, motion made in second, and we adopt the minutes of the meeting of October 11th as amended. Judy, please.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Bernal.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
The work session?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion we adopt the minutes from the work session of October 11th, 2011.
Second. Motion made in second, and Judy, please.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Bernal.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay, now getting into new business. First item is an ordinance amending the code of ordinances by revising chapter forty-two on floods. Judy?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, you will recall that September of this year, we had an extended work session in which Ms. Vass and Mr. Somerset went through the changes which the city is being required to make to its floodplain ordinance. As a refresher, you'll remember that these changes are required of the city by FEMA in order to maintain our ability to participate in the national flood insurance program, not only we, but for our citizens as well. Both FEMA and DCR have reviewed this ordinance and have found it acceptable. We have until November 2nd to approve this if we wish to continue to participate in the flood insurance program.
Okay, and is anybody prepared to make a motion to adopt this ordinance?
Mayor, reluctantly move that we adopt an ordinance amending the code of ordinances by revising chapter forty-two floods as an emergency measure forced down our throats by the federal government.
I would like to reluctantly second that, or second his reluctance, maybe that's...
Okay, I think I'm hearing a motion to accept the, to adopt the ordinance amending the code of ordinances in a second as an emergency measure. And I will share with the public, you know, that dealing with federal government yourselves and dealing with federal government as a city ourselves and as your representatives, it is very difficult at times to feel good about these things. But the one thing that council can agree on is that the flood insurance is an asset that we cannot forego for our citizens, and therefore, we're moving the motion forward. As well, I believe, Randy, this opens to the citizens their avenue to petition directly for themselves, opens up that where you do not agree with the FEMA regulation, there's a procedure to do that. Can you expand on that briefly?
The letter of MAP amendment process is open to appeal approved MAPs. So assuming that you all approve this this evening as an emergency measure, those persons who disagree with the underlying topography or size as it relates to their particular piece of property can now, will now be free to pursue that process. And we do have citizens who go through that process after each MAP provision. I've sent out some letters recently, some people who recently approved based on the ordinance.
Okay, any other questions, comments, or concerns? If not, Judy, please.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Bernal.
Aye.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Given the tone of the letter, I would prefer to do something different. For the citizens of Pecos and I will vote yes.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay, thank you very much, council. And next item under new business is a resolution authorizing the execution of a services agreement for the Code RED emergency notification system.
Mr. Mayor, this item is before the council this evening because it is a three-year contract of $15,000 per year, but as this three-year contract exceeds my expenditure authority, so it's here for your consideration. This is for the continuation of our Code RED emergency notification system. Cliff is here, can speak to it. I would like to commend him. We, I can't remember when it was, but it was earlier this year, we began to learn that there were other folks in this business that were offering pretty competitive deals. It's sort of like if you think about phone companies or cable companies, they are constantly updating their market approach. And we went back to Code RED to see if their current program offering was the best they could do. Because if it was, we would likely be initiating a process to look for someone else. And to their credit, they matched the improved functionality minutes, et cetera, of the others, and in some instances, beat it. That was really something that Cliff took the lead on, and this provides us much more flexibility than we ever had. For those that are watching at home, this $15,000 is partially grant funded and is a program that we encourage every citizen to be part of. And it is, it has variables to it. You don't have to be part of the entire thing. You can customize which parts of the program that you'd like to be notified on. And Chief, why don't I stop talking and let you start?
Well, Mr. Mayor, and members of council, as you well know, our primary use of the emergency notification system, or this particular notification system, has been during the course of emergencies, hurricanes, storms, and those kinds of things. And other jurisdictions do use the notification system for less important matters, but sometimes for employee notifications for various events. But we've really relied on it as an emergency communication piece, and we have gotten a great response from the community on the amount of information we've been giving, and we've seen that respond. And particularly, the best example I can give you is the citizens moving their cars out of the low-lying areas prior to the arrival of stormy weather. And we've actually received some chudos to the city from some of the insurance companies for saving, you know, in at least one case, hundreds of thousands of dollars of potential damage to vehicles because we were able to get folks to move their cars. So we have found this to be a highly desirable system. It minimizes rumors in the city and allows us to give factual, update, real-time information to the citizens so they can react to save their lives, properties, and make good decisions for their families. Code RED has responded back to my request, looking at our cost. And the contract that's before you tonight represents about a $350 reduction in the annual cost. But where we're really getting a bonus here is that during Hurricane Irene, with the number of all calls that we did make to the public, we incurred an overage in the number of minutes that were allotted under our contract and incurred a $2,250 bill. They are going to wipe that slate clean and take that off the books. And going forward, anytime we use minutes where it's for a justified emergency, such as a hurricane or a storm, we will get those minutes back after the hurricane's over. So we no longer will run out of minutes because of our use of it during an emergency. So really, our minutes now become unlimited in terms of the minutes that we use for emergency purposes. And we really don't use the system for non-emergency purposes, so we anticipate the level at which we now fund them and the number of minutes we use is going to be satisfactory, will never run out. We get the free reload there each time. So that's the benefit. The other benefit we have by sticking with Emergency Communications Network and the Code RED system is that if we were to switch vendors at this point, we would have to get citizens to go back in and reload all the data back into the system, because the data doesn't belong to us as contracted, belongs to them. So at this point, you know, we don't have access to all that data. So we would have a period of time where we wouldn't have all those phone numbers and addresses and email addresses in the system so we could make a call. And that would be, that could be problematic for us if that happened and we had an event. So I think this is the best decision for us to move forward, and Code RED has been very understanding and worked with us to come up with a new contract. By our commitment for three years, we're seeing a better price and we're seeing a better functionality, and we're getting a lot of benefit. So I would highly recommend that you vote for this tonight and allow us to go ahead and secure the agreement immediately.
Okay, thank you, Chief Bowen. Like I said, the staff, again, does us well as a city council with negotiating things like this, and we just really appreciate it. And I know it's a vital service that we all believe in. So with that said, is anybody prepared to make a motion?
I just had one question.
Okay.
I noticed that the quote said three years at $7,200. And then on Exhibit A, where you get down to what we're going to pay them, I noticed the first year is $7,500. Is that because we've already paid them for that first year?
Yes, they're making it retroactive to this year to, so they clean up that. And also, there's a second, the weather add-on, the weather warning add-on is a piece, is a $3,750. So we were paying $11,300 a year, this will take it to $10,950 a year for the three years. So it's over $30,000 for the three years, but they're going to make it retroactive, and then they're going to wipe out the $2,250 outstanding bill.
Chief, I'd just like to say that the fact that you limit this, or that we limit
this just to emergencies, makes it a lot stronger system. I'm in a workplace one where we use it for all kinds of stuff, and it becomes kind of bothersome and people just disregard it. And the fact that the way you use it makes it a very strong system, and had a lot of citizens compliments about it.
And did you say, how much of this is federal grant money?
We get about a $5,000 grant that we can put towards sort of anything in this area. And depending on the year, the amount of support's between three and five of that $5,000.
Okay, and I would also like to say thanks. You're doing a good job with this system. And it might be worth pursuing, talk to the insurance companies who are so grateful that they saved hundreds of thousands of dollars, see if they'd like to give us some grant money as well.
There you go. Good idea.
Yes.
That's actually come up as an idea in our recent discussions about that. But yes, and they're very appreciative, so we know that they see this as a benefit, and certainly, our citizens do as well. So it's been a win-win for us all the way around. And I think we've had it now just over two years, so we've had the opportunity to use it more than a couple of times, and we do get positive feedback.
I think the first time we used it was the 2009...
Yes, excellent. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we adopt the resolution authorizing the contract for Code RED with Emergency Communications Network Incorporated.
Second. Okay, motion made in second. Any further discussion? Thinking on Judy, would you please come over?
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Bernal.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Next item under new business is a resolution making an appointment to the Wetlands Board.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion to reappoint Mr. Steve Tappas to the Wetland Board.
Second. Okay, motion made in second, and we adopt the resolution with Mayor Steve Tappas inserted as a reappointment. Any questions, comments? Okay, Judy, please.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Bernal.
Aye.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay, next item under new business is a resolution making appointments to the school board. Is anybody prepared for motion there?
Mr. Mayor, I move we adopt a resolution making appointments to the school board. For the at-large position, we would like to postpone that, and for the western, insert the name of David Huck.
Second. Okay, motion made in second that we postpone the at-large appointment, and we insert the name of David Hucks for the western precinct. Any further comments? Okay, Judy, please.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Bernal.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Again, our best wishes to the family of Bill Smith, and our wish for success to Mr. Hucks as he takes that seat. Okay, next item is a resolution canceling the second meetings of the month of November and December 2011.
Mr. Mayor, I move we adopt a resolution canceling the second meetings of the months of November and December 2011.
Second. I was just seeing if y'all were just paying attention there. Okay, so we have a motion made in second that we cancel the Thanksgiving and Christmas meetings, and I don't think there'll be any further discussion. At least I won't let there be any further discussion.
Let me call it real quick.
Yes, please.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Bernal.
Aye.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay, and next is a request for financial assistance for the Pecos and Little League concession stand project. Randy, if you have some more questions on this?
I'll introduce this, and then I'll introduce Jay Hicks, who is the president of Pecos and Little League, who's here and has agreed to come and help me explain this. As council members will recall, in May, I think it was, of this year, the council assigned a MOU, approved signature of an MOU with Little League, the construction of a concession building which also included restrooms down at the baseball complex. That agreement provided for up to $50,000 in city cost share assistance, which would be combined with the money raised by Little League, as well as their volunteer labor, and also materials that might be donated, and together would form a type of public-private partnership. The agreement that the city struck relating to its financial support had $10,000 for, up to $10,000 for the construction and installation of utilities, and separately, up to $40,000 for actual construction and material expenses, which would be on a reimbursable basis once Little League had obtained a certificate of occupancy and the building had been conveyed to the city. And Little League proceeded along that path as Mr. Hicks outlines in his letter, which is the italicized intention in your staff report. They had some unanticipated events, both good and bad, which they were confronted with over the summer. And they are now asking you, in order to move forward, to approve an amendment to the MOU, which would not change the city's financial obligation, however, would change the timing of the reimbursement. What they're requesting is approval to reimburse 25 of the $40,000 in construction and material expenses at the dry-in stage, with the balance coming at the end and subject to the same conditions as the original agreement. They've also included, and there's a drawdown scheduled in your package, a timeline for when they believe they'll be at the dry-in stage, and when they believe they will be at completion. With that, I ask Jay to come up and share with you his perspective and answer any questions you may have regarding their request.
Jay?
Thanks for coming this evening. Absolutely. I apologize for the attire, just had to come straight from football practice this evening. It's basically, as Randy laid out for you back this summer, when we originally did the MOU, we did not foresee three of our five teams going to the state tournament. Our expenses were three times what they normally are in the summer, which basically has drawn down our cash flow. The other really, that's, as Randy mentioned, that's a good thing, but a bad thing in this situation from a cash flow perspective. We also anticipated more volunteer slash donations would be forthcoming, which we have not, we've not been able to procure enough of at this point. Therefore, we anticipate to make sure this project gets completed on a timely basis, and per the plans, we're going to need to outlay more cash expenses than we had originally planned. That's basically it in a nutshell.
Okay, so let me see if I summarized this correctly. Cash flow issue caused by extreme success in Little League, sending three teams to state.
I'm sorry, not to interrupt, but that expense was close to $25,000.
Okay, and with that said, basically, you're asking for us to not increase our cash contribution to the project, but just the timing of it to come in much at a quicker rate.
Roughly halfway through the project.
So we're not changing city obligation, we're just changing the timing?
Yes, sir.
Okay, any other questions of council for Jay?
Not to Jay, but does this put any undue burden on the city that we anticipated not doing this?
Yes, sir.
So it really doesn't matter?
That's correct.
We got enough cash to do this, and it's not going to be a problem.
We already, we had originally planned, the original timeline, as you recall, the hope was to have this done by fall. So we had planned to have it available by fall.
We should have already spent the money, and we haven't spent any.
Just an update on the project. Little League has invested, spent close to $3,000 up to this point. Mr. Paul Michaels has been working with Debbie Vest to complete the survey. That's being reviewed at the moment by Mr. Somerset. We expect that to be done this week, and with that, hopefully, we'll be ready to file for our permits.
Okay, thanks, Jay. Appreciate that.
And I would like to point out, I notice on this that there are quite a few, or a few Pecos and businesses that are contributing labor and material. I see Two Islanders Plumbing and Southern Plumbing and Atlantic Heating and Air, and some others, I can't, it's hard to see little print, but it's great that our citizens are participating in this.
Public-private partnership. Okay, anybody prepared to make a motion?
Mayor, I move that we approve an interim drawdown of $25,000 to the Pecos and Little League project.
A motion made in second that we provide the financial assistance for the Pecos and Little League concession stand project. Any other comments or concerns? Thinking on Judy, please.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Bernal.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay, comments of the city manager?
Mayor, I'll be brief. Just want to thank once again our citizens, our businesses, our staff, our volunteers, and our guests for a very successful seafood festival that only works with the active cooperation of everybody. So I appreciate that very much. I want to remind the community and the council that on Veterans Day, November 11th, the Pecos and Garden Club and American Legion Post 273 will be having a ceremony of Veterans Day remembrance and Blue Star Memorial by Wayne Marker dedication here at City Hall at 11 o'clock, and the public is encouraged to attend. Also, lastly, I just wanted to congratulate one of Pecos and's businesses, Unity Business Systems, who was recently accepted as one of a handful of pilot program participants from Hampton Roads Partnership Economic Development Program. This was, USB, or EBS, excuse me, applied for this with the active encouragement of our economic development program. And what this will do for them is to provide resources that are focused on taking successful businesses and helping them grow to the next level. And the resources come from the National Center for Economic Gardening at the Edward Low Foundation, and its research, technical assistance, and it's really hoped to be a really important evolutionary infusion of brain trust to an already outstanding company, and one of five in Hampton Roads.
Excellent. I'm sorry, I know you were speaking, but I wouldn't...
No, it's okay, you did great.
And that's awesome.
Okay, Dr. Bernal. Just to echo what Randy said about the seafood festival and what a great turnout it was, and as an aside to that, I was talking with the chief, I said, you know, how were things? Were things nice and smooth and so forth? One minor incident that occurred in a parking lot, and with that crowd, I have no more than that, it's a real tribute to not only our citizens who were there, but all of our guests who came in from out of town. I think it was a wonderful thing, and the fact that it was such a well-mannered group throughout really, really adds to the enjoyment of everybody that was there. So thanks to everybody that had anything at all to do with it.
Okay, thank you. Randy?
I'd just like to agree wholeheartedly, the city did a wonderful job, and as they always do, and given a great success.
Frank?
A couple of things, Mr. Mayor. I went to a meeting at the Ark, I think it was a week ago Thursday, and if anybody in council has not been down there yet, you ought to take a visit. They do a wonderful job, they have contracts with maybe five or six different businesses. They just hooked up with the United States Navy to replenish all the ships in Norfolk, the ships and the submarines in Norfolk. And they do a good, they have just started a program where they are scanning in records, you know, hard copy records that people keep in boxes for years and years, as you're required to do so. They started a scanning process, and I think the city's looking in perhaps into having them help us out with some of our hard copied documents that we have. I went to a meeting at Thomas Nelson that was hosted by the new president there, and it was a combination meeting with Thomas Nelson and the Peninsula Workforce Development, where they had gotten $400,000 from the Ford Foundation to do a study on jobs availability, or jobs to be available in the 2012-2016 timeframe. And they got responses like from 15 of 18 major companies in the area. And one of the highlights was that the shipyard, for example, in that timeframe will need about 11,000 jobs. And they stressed the need for people going into any kind of work, like in the shipyard, to have good skills in math, in people's skills. One of the things that they find they're lacking with a lot of businesses, or when people apply for jobs, is they don't have the skills in business to get along with others. It was, you know, eye-opening thing, the workforce development got like another $4 million grant to train folks to work in the fields that will help out in the 2012-2016 timeframe. And the last thing I got is that, I think we've all heard from residents around Leyden Way and the surrounding area about the cannons that went off during the reenactment at the Pecos and Museum. The last one I got, you know, people were going to start a petition about not having it again. And I know it's a five-year program that they have that's going to be going on down there as far as the reenactment goes, but I think we need to do something to help the residents down there when, you know, walls, you know, shatter, and photographs come down from the walls, and windows, you know, shake and things like that. We need to do something, whether it's to lower the powder, maybe in the cannon, or have somebody hold up a sign that goes, you know, has words, you know, Bravo, Oscar, Oscar Mike in front of them, you know. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
Boom, boom, when it happens. So, I mean, it's just, you know, a lot of people are worried, there are older people down there, and it scared them, I think, a lot, so.
Yeah, I've had people call me that. Never complained about anything, and I think we definitely need to regulate that operation.
We're going to have to take a look at that.
Yeah.
And I think Randy's already engaged on that.
We're working...
We're working on that.
And I guess the last thing is, you know, your invocation, you mentioned Bill Smith. I mean, you talk about a guy who volunteers or a person who volunteers. I mean, he filled, you know, four positions on the city here, the BZA, Wetlands Board, Planning Commission, and then he got a pay-in job on the school board. I'm sure, but I am sure that after he had finished his, his second tour in the school board, he probably would have signed up to be, to work on the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board or something like that. I mean, he was just involved in the community in a thousand different ways, and he'd be deeply missed, I'm sure, by all of us and by the entire community.
Thank you for that, Frank.
That's it.
Very good. Bud?
Yeah, just a few comments. I also received some phone calls relative to the cannons during the museum's reenactments. And the people who called me were very positive relative to the museum. And I'm, I'm a, I'm a big fan of the museum. I think they're doing an excellent job. And so were the people who called me. They thought that they, that they were doing a great job, and they really thought the reenactment was a nice thing and a good success. They just, the concussion at the end of the cannon through the neighborhood was causing them some problems. And so I think that's something that needs to be looked at, the display of the cannons or some active firefighting, maybe in another location, but not maybe in a residential neighborhood. To the credit of the museum, they did a fine job referencing the enactments, and the neighborhood is proud to have them there for that. I'd also like to thank Ellen and Teresa for their time tonight, coming out here, making their presentations. They did an excellent job. And everyone involved with the seafood festival, and to include the people who just came to firefight. It was a great success, and everyone had a good time. We could not have had better weather. And Randy, the IT people with the city, I like to compliment them every time I go to the website. I'm impressed with the new website. The new mail services are phenomenal, okay? It's much more user-friendly and makes it a lot easier to get the mail, read the mail, and respond to it.
Thank you very much. I'll pass that on. First?
I'd like to reiterate what other council members have said, and then just point out a couple of dates for people to remember. And I'm not, I don't have the exact times or dates, but the, the middle school is having the spooky old schoolhouse for this sometime this week, so look on the website, just unless somebody can tell me that date and time right now?
I'll look it up.
Okay. And Halloween is for children ages 12 and under, and then there's certain times that we have that, so I hope everybody has a safe weekend, trick-or-treating. And finally, the Kiwanis is sponsoring a spaghetti dinner fundraiser to benefit the food bank. It's sponsored by Kiwanis, the Briar Patch, and the PBA, Peninsula Business Association. So I have tickets to sell for $10 apiece. It is for Sunday, November the 6th, after church time, starting at 11, I suppose. And I've already gotten money from Councilman Green and Vice Mayor Freeman, so I'll be talking to the rest of you after the meeting. That's all, sir.
Carrie?
There's not, not much I can add. I think the fact that we had 50,000 people here over three days with the very minor number of incidents, just as a tribute to the people as well as the city. So just, whole seafood fest was impressive. That's it.
Okay. And certainly, the mayor is proud of staff for putting on such a successful festival. I had no doubt that they would pull this off, nor that our citizens would be great there. Jay, thank you for your service. Thank you for what Pococin Little League has done for the city of Pococin for many, many years. That's probably why we have, you know, state championship caliber teams every year, is those feeder programs, the same thing that we experience in football. And it's, it's through volunteers such as yourself. So I hope that in some small way, council can help Little League out where we can, and that you'll let us know if there's other needs that we can participate in.
Open the door.
We didn't, we got a list. With that said, let's see, I think that's all I've got today. I will inform council that on the harder side of economics here, we did attend a meeting with Hampton Roads Federal Facilities Alliance, and the federal cuts in facilities and the military is something that we're, that they are closely monitoring. I would tell you that there's no better time to stay in touch with our partnership with the Hampton Roads Federal Facilities Alliance. When we start talking about loss of aircraft, or we start talking about loss of ships in the area, then we need to certainly pay attention and help our neighbors, our neighboring surrounding, neighboring cities with these challenges because it affects our citizens as well. But certainly some not-so-great news there, some not-so-great news if everybody would like to watch the work session that we had just prior to the meeting to see the financial challenges of the city in the, in the near, in the near term. But with that said, I have nothing else, and I'll ask for a motion to adjourn. Second. Motion made in second, is that we adjourn the meeting. And Judy, please.
Councilman Creaker.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Bernal.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.